To give you a sort of a brief history on what I've been trying to do. Are you guys hearing me? Okay, because I can't see.
Yes, yes.
Okay. So. I started working on this. Actually, this is me and I am a space nerd. I have a passion for everything that is space related. And I grew up in the Apollo generation. So that means that when I was growing up, you know, everything was about, you know, exploring space and all that stuff. And I wanted to be an astronaut when I was growing up. Unfortunately, I found out that I am claustrophobic. So being in a spaceship is probably pretty hard and tricky for me. So I went into filmmaking instead. So I've had a 20 year career in doing visual effects for movies. And then I also played a lot of games. So these are some of the movies that I've worked on. And this was all done mostly in LA. And. So what I did was. Because of my history with visual effects, I found that I could actually combine my, my, my knowledge, my technical knowledge, and also like, you know, use it to explore my passion for space. So what I did was actually take satellite data from the Mars orbiter and convert it into essentially game data that I can put into a game level. And then, you know, sort of drive around in it. So each map, this is based on the the actual high rise data, each map is roughly about five kilometers by five kilometers. And you can drive anywhere on the map. And if you had the gear, you could probably also do this in VR, which is actually a lot more immersive than just driving it. This is not me, but this, but you can actually, the program is actually set up so you can drive in VR and it has haptics, so you can sort of, you know, essentially feel the driving if you wanted to. The reason I did this was because I wanted to explore Mars. And I realized that because of the technology, I was able to use the tools that I have to make it so that I can explore Mars. And in doing so. So now what I'm doing is I'm just basically sharing my toy with all you fellow science explorers. So that you too can have an opportunity to drive around on Mars. So what the map basically has right now is we have about 18 maps from all over Mars. And you can actually see this best in Google Earth. I don't know if you guys know this, this is Google Earth, this is a program from Google. I am broadcasting to you now from right about here somewhere in this area. But in Google Earth, you can actually set it to Mars. And you can basically explore the planet of Mars in Google Earth. I've put bookmarks on there so you can actually see all the locations that the, the game currently lets you go to. So these are all the locations for what we have in the game. So let's go to Victoria Crater, something that you guys will all know. So this is Victoria Crater, this is the crater that the Mars Exploration Rover Opportunity explored. This is the trail that you can actually follow on Google Earth. It landed over here and then it drove, it took about a thousand days to drive to Victoria Crater. And it basically explored the side of the crater along this way. So this is what you can look at on Google Earth. But we took this data and put it into our engine. So I'm going to launch this program for you. Okay, so this is our game or simulator. I am in driving this rover around basically. So you can do the same thing, you can essentially explore the whole area, you can sort of look into the crater. You know, drive around crater if you want. You can pop the view into the rover, so you can feel like you're actually driving in the rover and look out the window while you're driving. Oh, okay, that's. I'm not been watching the road too much. So what this thing is doing is actually taking the satellite data and then dropping it into the game to sort of, you know, let you experience the driving into the game. We do have some of the slight differences is that the actual data that we get from the satellite stuff is very not as detailed as this, but we're using a method for essentially cheating the ground terrain to make it feel like there's more information there. So if you look at this, you can actually see the raw satellite data. This is what we were actually getting from the satellite, which is, you know, not as much detail. So there is a game sheet that we use to sort of add more game look. So we can actually feel like we're more in there. So we can, there, there's, I'm controlling this with an Xbox controller. But you could pretty much use a gamepad or a keyboard if you want. I can look around the rover. And the, this rover is a little overpowered, I can drive it really fast, this guy moves about about 120 miles an hour. So you know, your usual car will be 60, 70 miles an hour, but this guy is overpowered so that we can basically drive around this whole thing really quickly. Now, it also has this jump jets that actually allow you to fly to take a look at stuff a lot better. We'll explore this a little bit more in the other levels because some of those maps are hard to drive around with with an actual rover. So we can essentially go, the, the trick is that because it's a virtual system, we can actually drive into the crater. The Mars rover, the actual Mars rover was not able to do this because obviously if it fell over, you know, nobody would be around to be able to pick it up. So we can actually explore the inside of the rover from the first person view. So you can see we're driving over some of the sand dunes that are detected on here as well. So if you go, if you look from up there, these are essentially sand dunes that are that were image from the satellites, so you can sort of see where all this stuff is. The other cool thing we can do in this game is to control the time update. The lighting of the shot, so there are controls where we can change the time of the day so that we can basically bring it down to an evening. There's the blue Martian sunset. Obviously, you know, some of this is not accurate because you shouldn't be able to rotate the sun left and right, it's more likely basically just going straight up. Oh, there's a question, are the physics based on Mars gravity? It sort of is, so we, this is at about 50% Earth gravity. Actual Mars gravity is about 38%. What, the, the reason I went with 50% is that at 38%, the, the wheels don't get a lot of traction. So in order to make this more enjoyable to drive around it and more engaging for, for kids and students, you know, we basically boosted up the the, the gravity up to 50%. So if, if I drive off this edge, you can see the fall is actually a little less. That's our, that's about 50% of Earth gravity right there. So there. This, this map actually has a little surprise on it, let's see if I can find it. Oh, it's on the other side. Yeah, so, so you can't actually do this with an actual rover, so. So this, this map actually in one of the updates, I actually added the Mars Exploration Rover. So you can actually see, oh, so there's a guy back here. This is the Mars Exploration Rover. Opportunity. I basically programmed it to match the same driving pattern that it actually did. However, it is driving really fast. You can see the indicators on there. It's, you know, it takes the Mars rover days to drive between these marker points. And obviously it's doing it over here in like a minute, but you can actually see it going there. The, the cool thing is we also allow you to take control of the rover. So we'll just take over the rover like so. And so now we can actually drive, oh, I just got ran over. So now we can actually drive the Exploration Rover. Now, obviously, this guy is going really fast. I think if I, if I remember correctly, this guy maybe does 25 meters in a day. The actual rover, but you can see we're actually driving it about like, you know, 20 miles an hour right now, which is totally not, not accurate. We do let you switch over to the mask cam. And then you can sort of drive around, look at the, ooh. You know, drive into the crater, the, obviously the actual Mars rover never did this. And then there's also the front hazard cam. Which you can sort of see right here. And the rear hazard cam. Okay, so one of the things that's interesting is that both the front and the rear and the mask cams all have essentially two cameras set next to each other. And the reason for this is that it allows the, the rover to actually generate a stereo view, which is kind of exactly why, how we're actually doing this stuff as well. I'm gonna pop. Let's see. I want to pop back to the presentation here. And sort of this is, I'm, I'm going to share this presentation with you as well. There's a lot of good information about each of the, the maps that I'm hoping to take you to and visit. So you can actually read up on it and, and look at stuff. The way that we actually generate this data and the same reason that there are two cameras on the Mars rover is that we basically use two different images that are right next to each other so that we can actually create a 3D stereo view. So what the orbiter does is just take a photo of Mars and then as it moves a little bit, you know, it takes another photo so that they're sort of right next to each other. If you can see over here, these two photos are almost the same, but they're offset so slightly. And using this, we can run essentially a 3D algorithm to generate like terrain data so that we can actually get the height of each of these maps. Now, you, we do that and then we take the data and we essentially turn it into game data. And the way we do that is essentially taking it into Photoshop and you know, tweaking the data so that we get essentially a height map, a color map. And then we control where we want stuff to actually happen with masks and all that stuff. Then we take, this is, this was our old first generation test model that we were testing things with. We put little design stuff on it and so this is essentially what you're driving around right now. These are all the fancy terrain and shader controls that allow us to make the ground look as real as it does and also to allow us to control the, the, the lighting. And so that's what we get essentially once we do that now. That's obviously really, really simplified. To, for comparison, you can actually see this was an earlier test that we did of Victoria Crater. Comparing that to the actual photo from the Mars Exploration Rover. So you can see that we're, you know, these edges over here, we're missing some of the detail because of the resolution of the mesh. But generally speaking, it gives you, you know, sort of the same thing. Okay, so I'm going to take you to South Olympus next, which is one of the other maps. Oh, let's see. Ken says, can one drive to the Mars rover site and meet them? That's kind of what we're doing with the, this rover right now. But a lot of the other rover sites like the, the Curiosity Rover, we don't have maps for those, so that's, that's a little trickier to, to drive over there and meet them. Okay, so we'll basically switch over to South Olympus. So this one over here essentially, if we look at the, you can also read up on this presentation as well over here. What it basically is, is this, it's a satellite. It's a portion of an impact crater, if we go straight up. You can see essentially it's like half of the crater over here. From Google Earth, we can also see the, the actual detail. So this is, this crater is about 200 kilometers south of the largest, the highest point on, on Mars, which is Olympus Mons. But what this guy actually does is our scan data is actually only of this particular section over here, this little cup shape where it looks like this piece sort of fell off and fell back into the crater. So from here, we can basically, oh, also we have a little things over there to, to explore. But we can basically drive into the crater over here and check out different things and see how it would look like, you know, in different lighting scenarios. When it gets really dark, I think I forgot to mention, we actually have headsets. So you can sort of drive, this is what it would feel like if you were driving around at night on Mars, essentially. Could be a horror movie. So this, so we're in sort of like in the crater and the depression. And what scientists basically do with all these all this 3D data is, is study how the, how things happen on Mars, how the geology is putting together. If you go up, and this is what I was talking about, if you use the thrusters, you go up, you basically get a better idea of, you know, how the land is constructed. And then drop down and explore whatever, you know, section that you want. Where else should we go? So the other one that I wanted to show you is Hail Crater. And this guy's here. Is pretty interesting. This crater, I believe I wrote down in notes, it's like 150 kilometers in size. And it's, it's, it's huge. What we're actually doing is only looking at a very small portion of this. The interesting thing about this part is that because of the, the height of the impact crater, there are actually gullies and channels on the side of the hills, which is where scientists believe that, you know, there was running water that sort of created what are essentially river channels. Oh, not Mars, remind me to show you that, Ken. Okay, so this is Hail Crater, we start you off on this little pad. And you can see it basically looks like, very much like a mountain range on Earth, except, and, and it has these sort of river gullies down here. But you can sort of see, you know, how like all this stuff. And the nice thing is that we can actually use our thrusters to, to fly around and stuff and drive down the river gullies. Sometimes I like to drive down this thing like at a super crazy speed. Of course, you can actually do that, you know, if you had a rover on Mars because you spent like billions of dollars trying to get it there, you don't want to wreck it. But because our rover, we can't crash our rover, so we can just drive it really fast down these gullies. So you can sort of see how like, you know, if you look up, you can see how these channels are forming. And sort of they see where the, where the river used to run on Mars. There's a question, do you see, do you foresee the satellite data sets for Jezero Crater? Ah, yes, so, and that's actually the last map that we'll get to in the presentation. We do have Jezero Crater in here, so you can actually, we're actually going to go try and take a look at that a little bit. But you can see the, you know, these, these river gullies that are formed essentially by running water all the way from the top of the hill down to the bottom. So what, what geologists actually do is to use these terrain data maps to sort of figure out how the crater formed, you know, why, why the rivers are, are running down this way and stuff like that. So this lets you just sort of explore the area. And because some of these hills are kind of steep, like this mountain range over there, you can't really get up to, so you would end up having essentially to fly over to it. But that's, yeah, so that point over there, this map is sort of a double scale, so that point over there is about six kilometers away from where we are. So the next one that's really interesting for us is Baccarat Crater. It is. Oh, ha, I have Google Earth on this. That's this guy over here. Are you guys, is the, is the video, hopefully the video is not stuttering for you guys on Zoom. It looks fine over here, so, you know, hopefully, hopefully it works out for you. So this crater actually has another crater inside, so you can actually see there's a, there's a large crater and there's a smaller crater inside that was created, you know, obviously after this stuff. So what scientists are actually interested in are all these landforms that are, you know, happening on this stuff. And over here, there are these cool cliff shapes that are called yardangs. And what they are is they're essentially erosion caused by wind blowing the sand dunes into essentially a rock face. So over millions of years, it actually erodes these areas, but they're all sort of oriented in the same direction. Because, so this is essentially the, the direction of the prevailing wind that's causing all this stuff. So let's go over there. Another question, student, I have a student with autonomous drones. Yeah, definitely, so this program is more of a what do you say? A passion project for me, I do this on my own time for my own stuff. I essentially, you know, I work for a game company and we do stuff. So this is more of a passion project that I'm doing. I'm happy to, you know, figure out how to actually use this in a, in a more better way to sort of educate students and stuff as well. So this is Baccarat Crater. Let me just drive off the cliff here and I will get down to the dune area. So right over here is essentially where the sand dune is. And you can see that these shapes over here, these are called the yardangs. These are the elongated shapes over here that you're seeing. We're basically somewhere in here, probably looking at one of these long things over here. So we essentially can drive up and you, so from ground level, you can get an idea of essentially how wind has shaped some of these areas, you can see that, you know, these little ridges over here that the winds have essentially eroded the rock through there. And then on the top over here, you know, it's a fairly flat surface, so that's sort of how these things are created. So you could basically essentially drive around and explore them. All the navigation markers that are here, they're basically areas of interest or areas that I've found interesting, so they're kind of like, you know, a good place to go explore stuff and just take a look at the view, like sometimes I'll just go drive over there and, you know, check out the, the scenery over there. This one is a really pretty map, essentially this, Noctis Labyrinthous covers an area that is. So this area is the scientists, essentially, they believe that this was caused by volcanic activity up in the slightly northern region over here. What that does is it causes all these faults that happen, that sort of where the, the, the ground plates sort of snap apart and you, you know, you get this sort of depression in there. What we're actually looking at, and so that, so you can sort of get the scale of, of everything, right? This is the, you know, the, the size of the fault. Our map is only about yay much of it, and that's about 10 kilometers of this stuff. So we're basically going to look at, you know, how these rocks are, what these shapes are over here and stuff like that. But that's the, that's the map area that we have, so. So this is Noctis Labyrinthous, oh, yeah, so I can shoot light balls as well. It's pretty cool when it gets really dark and you can shoot stuff, but that's more of a distraction actually, so I'll just try not to do that. So this, this one I really enjoyed because it's it's sort of like really nice to, to explore that there's, there's a, these sand ridges down here that are really fun to drive over. So we're basically going down into the, into the fault right now. And these little ridges over here, they're essentially dunes that are, sand dunes that are formed by, by wind. So you can sort of explore this area, you can see how, you know, the, the mountains are up there and it's sort of, this area here has been eroded and filled with essentially. the, the mountains are up there and it's sort of, this area here has been eroded and filled with essentially like dirt and sand. But this area over here is essentially part of that same terrain up there that's sort of, you know, collapsed in on this area. So that's like these, these these shapes over here, those are actually from the satellite data. So they're, they're pretty cool. We're going to try and get up to that spot over there. So they give you a, a scale of things. So this rover is designed to fly. There's a stabilized flight. There's also for the more challenging guys, you can actually put it off stabilized flight mode. And it's a little more interesting because they're flying it like, how you say, an actual helicopter, which gets tricky because then you can get upside down and get all this stuff. So there's our spot. These striations over here are actually not part of the terrain. There, I believe they are essentially artifacts from, from the stereo effect of it. So this is the size of a normal person on Mars. That is me in the middle and my two brothers. We were, we were playing around with the digitizer and we digitized ourselves. So I went ahead and put them in here. So it gives you a good sense of the scale of everything. So from up here, oh, oh, shoot. Oh, I'm sorry. From up here, you can sort of look all the way down the valley and, and see all that stuff over here. See. So Jezero Crater is the, is a site of the next Mars 2020 mission. That's just the, the really cool part of it. We went ahead and put this in. It's a this area over here, this, this yellow circle that is the landing ellipse for the Mars 2020 mission. And the red square is the, essentially the, the map area that we currently have. So oops, no, no questions yet. And we can actually take a look at that on Google Earth as well. So the reason that Jezero Crater was one of the filings and the one that was eventually picked is because this crater is believed to have been a giant lake for billions of years. Essentially, the, I think the crater was formed probably about three billion years ago. But you can sort of see from these, from these landforms over here, that essentially at one time there was a flowing water on Mars and it flowed into this crater, you know, to generate this stuff. There, and, and the thing is, this takes like millions of years to form this fan delta shape. So the, the belief is that this crater has had standing water or, or land, you know, or, or water for at least a couple of million years, which makes it a very good candidate for, you know, exploring the possibility that there may have been life on Mars. So that's one of the reasons why they're looking to land that Jezero Crater. So this shape here is essentially a fan delta. You can actually see that, you know, on, on structures on Earth as well, like the, the Ganges River in India. You can, you can sort of see this fan delta. It's just that at this point in time, there is no longer any water over here. So you can sort of see all these shapes. Let's go to Jezero. So this is the crater over there. Right over there, that flat area is where the landing ellipse, this entire flat area, that's the basin of the crater. And if you turn around and look this way, this is where the, this is essentially going up to the fan delta. But you can see how like, you can see all these details, all these shapes in the, in the satellite photo, but then when you look at it from the ground, they're, they're very, very different. So this is a good way to sort of like explore and see where, where things are. There is a smaller crater in here that was, that looks like it's a little newer. But you can see where the fan delta shapes are essentially the, the river forms over here. And you can essentially explore all this stuff. I don't know if you guys like to fly from the inside or also I can drive really, really fast, which is a little slightly crazy. The data sets. No, the data sets, Lisa has a question. Are your data sets strictly imported from Google Earth? Or do you allow your syntax to import other satellite data? These data sets actually come from the Mars Reconnaissance Orbiter, the high-rise data. And the reason for grabbing that is that it's the, the fidelity of that data is, is a lot higher than what other satellites have. So this data essentially is about, there's one data point for every half meter. A lot of other data sets are still like one data point for, you know, 10 meters or 100 meters and stuff. So you can sort of see like essentially at this scale, if you're on the ground, one data point for 10 meters makes it really hard to, you know, or really hard to get an amount of detail over here. Even that, even at one point every half a meter, you can see it still looks kind of gamey, like there's, there's, you know, it's, it's sort of soft and stuff. We're not seeing the, the actual fidelity of the data. And that's always going to happen with satellite data, you know, as we build new technologies. I'm sure we'll get more fidelity on this stuff. I mean, it's kind of the same thing. One of the things I, I wanted to do for a long time was to simulate and fly around the Great Red Spot on Mars. But the, the voxel points for that, I think it's like one voxel point for every 10 kilometers, which makes it kind of, you know, if you're flying around it, it's kind of like very hard to, very hard to see any difference, you know, right close to you. So that's kind of what I'm using. So the reason for all this being possible is really because we have, you know, one data point for every half a meter or roughly. Anyway, so this is the, the small crater that was formed, I assume later. Again, you see all these little sand dunes over here. But you can basically explore all this stuff. And these little patterns on the floor, they are obviously not from the actual data. So this is what the original data would look like. The other thing to note too is that this original data is actually also false color. Because the satellites only give you one channel of information. It's basically, in theory, it's basically black and white. And it's, it's in a wavelength that's not even essentially light. So but we use that, you know, like JPL would use that essentially to sort of modify the stuff and at least get a rough idea of what stuff would look like as well. So there is some artistic interpretation on the color of the, the, even the raw satellite data. But that's just because, you know, we don't have enough, as much information detail as we'd like to have. Like compared to Earth, we don't have a lot of data on Mars. Data that is detailed enough to recreate all this stuff, essentially. Let's see what else. How are we on time, Ken?
Pretty good. Plenty of time.
Okay. I was gonna allow questions, but actually let me show you two, because Ken and I were talking about this earlier before we started. With the same kind of data, we, we can, we, we're not, we, we don't have to just simulate Mars. We can simulate other planetary bodies as well. So this one I put in last year for the 50th anniversary of the moon landing. This is actually the Apollo 11 landing site. So we can actually drive up to it. So you can get an idea of, you know, how this stuff is. There's Neil Armstrong taking a photo of the Apollo 11 lander. And Buzz Aldrin is in the back. So you can sort of see, you know, get a, get a feel for how this area was as well. And obviously this is a lot flatter because they, you know, it's a, it's a lot easier to land the lander on a flat surface. So this gives you sort of an idea of where stuff was. And, you know, there's your rover. But this gives you a good way to sort of get a feel for what it feels like to be there. You can see, this guy is actually, is actually one sixth gravity, like on the moon. So when you drive, I'm like, I'm gunning it right now and my wheels are just not picking up any traction because any small bump, you know, makes me fly up. So trying to get traction on the ground is just like crazy. And I could slide and slip quite a bit. So so this is actually what it would feel like if you drove a giant overpowered rover across, across the moon's surface. Okay, should we open it up for questions? Ken?
Okay. So we'll, you know, unmute people who have questions. So does anybody have any question? We can unmute you. We can raise your hand. Oh, I think Lisa might have something to say. I think that's, that's allow this to talk. And Liam, Liam also, he has a great gadget for, I says he might have some great comments. Liam, Lisa, please speak up.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Alan. That's a wonderful presentation. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Liam Kennedy is on the line as well. I thank you, Liam. I have the ISS above and I use it all the time. It's the wonderful device for, for sharing about exploration. And the, the theme projects that I share with students are at a higher level. And also with COVID, I've been very fortunate to be able to share the platform virtually.
Yeah.
And this is one truly from, like you shared the Apollo 11 lunar landing.
Yeah.
We're going back to the moon to colonize it.
Yes.
So this is really great information to share for, from a student's perspective to be engaged and understand the moon, the surface, where we're going to the south pole of the moon to colonize and better understand. And I just commend you on this because I have students that receive the, you know, COVID shut them down, but they received the award to go to NASA Johnson Space Center with their autonomous robotics and drones. And so unfortunately that was held off, but they still want to learn. And so we're going to do things virtually.
Yes. Yeah. And that's sort of the, the way that we'll probably end up doing it, you know, in the short term because of COVID, unfortunately. The, 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 the tricky thing is that, you know, I am, I'm just one person. I do this as a passion project. There were more things that I wanted to add to this that I couldn't, or I didn't have time to. One of them being networking this stuff so that we can have, you know, eight or more people driving around the surface at the same time. So you could actually have, you know, a teacher, you know, teaching this stuff and you could just drive around and explore and talk about all this stuff as well. The, the networking code is in there. I just never had a chance to finish it. So unfortunately, it's like, you know, it is what it is.
Is, is there any room for collaboration with students from universities with, or, or nonprofits that I'm also with 2,800 women that are all from different areas, Charleston Women in Tech. We are neuroscientists. We are from the military. We are from aviation, aeronautics, astronomy, aerospace. Would we be able to provide support because we have students that we have through the US Air Force or the US Coast Guard Academy partnership that we could engage to support?
I would be happy to, to do that. Like I said, I, you know, part, part of the problem is that I have a day job and it's a really fun day job. But it obviously keeps me from working on this, you know, full time. So the more people that are interested in helping to develop this further, you know, the, the better it can be. There's a, I don't know if I
I love this part.
Okay, I think I have activated this stuff. Let me check. No, I didn't do it correctly. There is a hidden networking panel here that is designed so that you can essentially, you know, connect a bunch of people together on the same map and drive around. You know, much like you would play an online game and stuff like that. So but yeah, I, I, it's in there. I just haven't had time to develop and do it properly. So if
Okay.
if you guys have students that are interested in, you know, helping to polish that stuff up and make, get it working. I'm all for, you know, people getting involved.
Okay, excellent. I'll, I'll put my email in the chat line and I know Liam has something to say. I, you know, the ISS has the 20th anniversary and, and this is just very interactive. And like you said, having many students engage together since we're all socially distanced. Um, this is something they can do virtually from their homes, but actually doing true authentic research at the same time.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah. Oh, sorry. It looks like there's a bunch of messages on chat that I did not read.
Okay, I'll mute myself and I apologize. I know Liam Kennedy is on the, on the line as well.
Hi, Liam.
Hi, Alan. Thanks, Lisa, for, for the, for the mention there. Yeah. So I, I, I just love the fact that you've, you know, made this your passion project and really enjoyed your drive-through simulation, sort of. It's really my, my kind of thing. And I just wanted to, to get straight on a couple of things.
Sure.
So it looks like this is, so we can get this on Steam.
Yes.
Right. So, and it's very inexpensive, right? It's like $1.99 right now. That is exceptional.
I, like I said, I have a great day job. And it's, 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 you know, I'm, I'm actually happy to give it up for free. The problem is if I do that, then I end up with people downloading and then I have to like support them, you know?
Exactly.
So tiny little bit on it, you know, and then that way you'll just, just get the people that are really, really Tiny little bit on it, you know, and then that way it'll just, just get the people that are really, really interested in it.
Very cool, so I have a, a couple of sort of follow-on questions. So have, uh, so do you, I'm trying to sort of relate this to classroom utilization.
Yes.
And do you have examples of where you've known that's happened? There, uh, I'm just trying to think, does this work on Chrome?
No, so that's part of the problem, right? So um, right now, this requires a GPU and a graphics card.
Right.
And that is obviously one of the things that, you know, because it's a new technology. So um, it, it takes a lot of power to run it. The, I'm, I'm, I built this with the Unreal Engine.
That was my other question, yeah, good, okay, excellent, yeah.
So here's the thing, I can compile it to run on my phone. It's, it's just that, so right now I'm getting whatever, 60 frames a second uh, on, on my GPU, right? On my phone, it is about four seconds a frame, if, if at all.
Right.
So, and that technology will obviously, you know, advance. I think at some point I'll, I'll just have faster phones and stuff like that. So my hope is that we can eventually get this on more platforms. And, and, you know, and this kind of speed that's needed to run it right now. Would hopefully be available eventually, you know, on lower class machines.
Right.
That's, that's one of the drawbacks right now is that it has to be on a GPU, so.
Yeah, ma- makes perfect sense. Uh, I was just relating it to the challenges that are going to be out there. Obviously for, for more uh, broad, uh, broad-based use, but that's a, that's a, that's a technology challenge. That I think every, everyone who's building the kind of uh, realistic simulator that you've got here is going to be dealing with. You know, Chromebooks are only good so far, so far, so uh. And uh, yeah, so you're showing opportunity here. Do you have plans to put in Mars 2020 uh, as a, as an object?
I would like to, I have actually downloaded the uh, the STLs. It's just that I'm tied on time right now, I'm.
Of course.
I'm also writing a book right now, so. So, there's a lot of stuff to do, so uh, yeah, it's, it's kind of on my list, I would love to keep doing this. But this is, this is, you know, to, to get back to what Lisa is saying. I'm happy to collaborate with more people who are interested in doing this, that can help do some of this stuff. Because I have a lot of ideas, I just don't have all the time to implement it, so, you know. If that's something that, you know, some of these people can do, like uh, I'm okay with making this. Uh, what do you call it, like? Free wear or, or educational wear, right? So that somebody can take it and develop it further, uh, and actually, you know, make uh, make more use out of it. Cause the, one of the things I'd love to do actually is to build uh. An entire planet that you can drive around. Like obviously, some parts of Mars will be really low resolution, be like 200 meters per sample point, right? But you should be able to drive, you know, around on that as well. So that these areas here that have all the nice high-rise data, they'll be high-rise, you know, highly detailed. But then you should be able to drive from one place to another, if you wanted to, it would take you a while, right? Cause even with the, even with the rover doing 100 miles an hour, it's still, you know, it's still quite a while. But I would love to see somebody, you know, develop this further and sort of use it as a exploration learning tool kind of thing.
Right, are you thinking of uh, maybe putting a, uh, putting the source code up on GitHub? Or something like that as a private repository so that you could have collaborators there or?
Possibly, so here's the thing, um, I, I, I don't write code, I, I'm an artist.
Okay.
I, there is no code in this thing, I'm just using Unreal, using the blueprints. So basically, you know, doing this, like uh, most of this stuff is essentially all a bunch of nodes connected to a bunch of nodes. And it gives you stuff like this. I got lasers from my, from my Mars rover.
That's superb, wow, I love, so, and I love the, the fact that you've allowed different viewpoints to be sort of.
Yes.
Position yourself, it really does give you that sense of, hey, yeah, I'm actually here on Mars, um, you know.
Yeah, I mean.
Looking as if I'm here, you know, that, that this, it's great, I just love that context for it.
Yeah, and I think that's, that's part of it is that essentially, you know, I want to go to Mars. So this is my way of going to Mars, I guess, so, yeah.
Got it. Very, very cool, anyway, I didn't want to hog the um, the sort of audio Q and A here. But uh, just want to finish by saying thank you so much for putting your effort into this, so.
Yeah, uh, you know, and, and whatever, however you can think of to help, you know, get this into more educational hands. Feel free, let me know. Oh, 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 see.
Oh, does it have some damage effects there, you can actually?
It has sound, you can't actually.
Okay.
But you know, you, you can't actually do this with a real rover, so.
Yeah.
But yeah, I mean, uh, you know, my email's in there somewhere, so feel free to, you know, contact me. See what we can do about, you know, getting this into an even more awesome shape.
Very cool, thank you, thank you so much.
Any other questions?
I think some, some people typed a question in the Q and A.
How long did it take for you to get there? Oh, uh, how long did it take to do this Mars rover? That is actually a really, really good question. It turns out that in my presentation. I, I, I was like, I don't have time to talk about this, so I added it in the addendum. So uh, what it actually is, it, it's been about five years. Once the VR stuff started coming out. I was very interested in figuring out how to get data in, you know, scientific data into Unreal Engine. So it started about like five years ago, this is one of the early tests from uh, 2016. This is the uh, first time that we're essentially driving a vehicle. This, these couple of tests were done with like the little guy running around, I think you saw, uh, where was that? This one, right? So the early test was, was done with a guy running around. But the problem is, you know, a guy can only run so fast. So literally this map alone, this Victoria Crater, would take me like 10, 20 minutes at, at my fastest speed. To get across to the other side. So that was uh, not very engaging, I guess. So the idea was, okay, I'm, I'm gonna drive instead, so the. So this guy came along, I was like, oh, there's this uh, cool vehicle called a Sherp. Which is like an all-train uh, SUV kind of, or truck kind of thing. So I dropped one into a test level. And it worked great, except for it has a really high center of gravity, so it kept on flipping over. So the next versions are essentially, so this is a view from inside the truck. And you can see also that, you know, it was like a really restrictive view and uh, I couldn't look at the top. So the next version was basically, I flattened the uh, the Sherp and I made the top uh, visible. So essentially you can get a better sense of being there, essentially, so. So that's 2017, uh, this is 2018 and 2019. So you can sort of see it's been developing over the last couple of years. Hopefully that answers your question, uh, let's see. The lunar landing is excellent, collaboration with students. Oh, okay, sure, yeah, I, uh, let me copy this and. Or I'll just type it somewhere. Sorry, I just typed in the email and, okay, um, yeah, so that's kind of, you know, where we are. And obviously, put this little guy in as a tribute. Simulator, there is a trailer uh, on uh, on YouTube, so you can sort of check it out if you want. But yeah, so that's where we are. Any other questions?
Yeah, any question, please uh, click raise hand or type in Q and A. So uh, well, I mean, if nobody has any question, you know, then uh, you know, we will thank Alan. You know, for this great demo and the presentation and uh, we'll keep working with Alan and uh, we'll have more opportunities with him. Actually Alan, you know, we actually uh, tried to talk to some people and I actually stopped by some of the um, local uh, VR store. You know, for the event we were talking about last year, you know, so it almost happened, I actually talked to some aerospace company who had the uh, VR project. You know, almost happened in March, but all of a sudden the pandemic was canceled. So that's, that's how it got a little bit chaotic, but we'll, we'll keep working with you, you know. Yeah, I still have the information you, you provided us. And uh, actually the local game company actually is very happy to uh, join. And uh, there were some uh, aerospace company, they also said yes, but you know, things got uh, you know, the, the bump a little bit. And the one, one thing, you know, what, what is any reason you choose Unreal over like Unity or other?
Unreal has, like, like I said, I'm not a programmer, so Unreal has uh, a node scripting system that lets me.
I see.
Essentially make this without having to write code. I mean, I can write a few lines of code, but um, I'm, I'm more of an artist on that side. So this Unreal lets me essentially, you know, do more of this stuff. And then I think uh, early on at the time, Unreal had uh, VR support first. So that was one of the things as well, was like, the, the original idea was to get this uh, working, you know, for VR. And, and I did get, it is working for VR, it's just that, um, this is also set up so that, you know. If you don't have VR, you can still sort of, you know, uh, try this out because it would. That, and that, that goes to the same technology issue that we were talking about, right? Is, is to make this more accessible. There's a technology component here that's needed, so uh, I made sure to try and do it, set it up so that you, you don't have to have VR.
Yeah, you were right, I, I think at that time when you started that, it's probably Unreal was uh, yeah, you were right, with the VR feature. But I think these days, almost each of the platform, uh, game, development platform has the VR features these days, yeah.
Yeah.
But, it was real better at that time. And then, you know, actually you mentioned you were um, artist, actually we are working on uh, posting some of the art on our uh, AEW Los Angeles as well, because website. Do you have some ours, you know, we can post it with some this, you know, on our artist webpage? Yeah, it doesn't have to be, you know, this, you know, something that you feel like to share with us.
Yeah, that stuff, uh, my, my, my work stuff uh, is, is pretty high-profile, so I, I have to leave it for them to do.
Okay, I understand.
Yeah, this is my art, you know, you're looking at my art right now.
Okay, yeah, yeah, if, if we can keep, uh, share a couple screenshots with us, that'll be fine too.
Yeah, 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 uh, yeah, I'll send, I'll send some screenshots so you can just use it.
Oh, wonderful, thank you so much. I think there are two more in Q and A.
Oh, let's see, um. To hear that you didn't utilize code. Yeah, uh, you know what, um, you should just, Unreal is free, so actually I think Unity is free as well. So you should just download it and try stuff, it's just, uh, you just have to do it in portions, it's like, you know, uh, obviously. First thing you do is not going to look as polished, so you can sort of see from my stuff as well, right? This is, this is what my stuff looked like, you know, uh, years ago. So um, it was more of just getting the experience first and then this stuff can actually, you know, help you do that. So I say go for it, don't just hope. You mentioned that this could be downloaded, oh, hey, uh, sorry Lisa, this does not work on a phone. I did test it with my phone and um, it's, it, it updates one frame every four seconds. So that is probably not going to, to happen soon. Okay, uh, what else? No other questions? Okay, Ken?
Thank you so much, thank you.
No problem, alright.
Okay, stay in touch.
Yeah.
Not what I had in mind, and uh, but anyway, let me set that uh, project aside. And if you give me a screen share, um, but, but let me say, of all the things I did in flying. The big mistake I made was failure to keep um, a journal. And I encourage all our STEM and STEAM students to keep a journal of everything they do. And as far as their projects and their experience as they go through life. I wish I had done that, uh, because it's hard to revisit and um, uh, what you have done in the past. If it's not written down or recorded in some way. I think it's a lot easier to do that today, of course, most pilots keep log books, so um. I had log books and I put little notes next to things than uh, some of the flights I've taken. And um, my book is a book of short stories about my flying. And uh, I'm hoping if you enjoy uh, short stories, uh, they're all true. Uh, I'm not saying everything I did was uh, safe, um, it was a calculated risk, you might say. And of course, I really enjoyed um, the previous presentation and the technology involved. To replicate things uh, on Mars. But I was hoping maybe at some point Alan uh, would consider trying to replicate what I call visual illusions. A lot of pilots have died, uh, because, and maybe even that last helicopter crash could very well been an illusion. Where the pilot thought, looking through fog or, or low visibility, thought he could clear the ground when in fact he couldn't. And I've been, um, investigated accidents where illusions uh, in flying have caused fatalities. So maybe Alan could, or someone with that kind of skill can replicate visual illusions. And that would be a very interesting application of that kind of technology. If you, if whoever is uh, controlling, if you give me a screen share, I'm going to take, I'd like to um, come back to Earth. And um, I want to talk about the future because our young people, uh, they will own the future. I don't want to lead them to that, uh, some things that might be interested here on Earth. For example, the National Interstate Flyway System, what is the Global Airport? And uh, what is the national, um, what is the JRC aircraft uh, design? And what is the national, what is the JRC aircraft design blended wing?
Yeah, Neil, you can share, share your screen. There's a green, small green button at the Zoom app.
Okay, let me see if I can find that. Oh, there it is. Okay, let's go there. Okay, can everyone see that? Okay?
Yes.
I'm going to go right, it's always a fun picture for me because that, you're looking at the world's first blended body wing aircraft. Isn't that amazing? 1924. The gentleman, the designer was Mr. Benelli. And that is an amazing, to me, that is a totally amazing airplane. And he went on to design other airplanes like that. And of course, today, the best, best we have right now is this airplane. And this airplane, of course, NASA hired Boeing. They designed this airplane. Of course, they started with a model and put it in the wind tunnel. And then the wind tunnel, from that, they then built a flying scale model. And then that was flown for about fifty forties. And then for some reason, it sort of disappeared off the map. My own opinion, and I hope I'm right, that someone is presently designing and building this airplane on a very large scale. And I think it could very well be Boeing. But there are some other companies, for example, this airplane, you can notice the the windows and so forth. This airplane is under design in the Netherlands. And so it's not just from here to there to there. It's happening, and our young people should go out and start designing, in my opinion, aircraft for the future. All right. And these are, we, we put together a program called Faster Future Air and Surface Transportation. It's an alliance. And then we're looking at Intermodal Community Air Service System. An intermodal community air service system means that different airplanes, different types of airplanes will move people around. And it is really a takeoff, you might say, a continuation of NASA's program called the Small Aircraft Transportation System. And they put this program together. I went to NASA and sat down with them. So no matter how old you are, just find the right person, sit down with them, tell them what you want to do. And lo and behold, he found $75 million. And they demonstrated the SATS program in Virginia in 2005. And that created the technology we call ADS-B, which then allowed our country, hopefully in the future, not too distant future, to have a national full-up transportation system that provides scheduled air service to all airports. Right now, our airports are categorized one through five. And there are 10,000 of these airports out there, but very small percentages of them have scheduled air service. So in the future, you could see all the benefits that would come from being able to have a full-up transportation system, which we renamed, or you might say, gave it another vision of the National Interstate Flyway System. And that was a fun way of looking at it because in 1700, everything moved by water. And so that was a National Interstate Waterway System. In 1800, we then built Interstate Railway System. Of course, in 1900, we built the Interstate Highway System. And then finally, in our century, we're going to build the National Interstate Flyway System. So what's going to happen in the next century, who knows? But for now, this is keeping us busy. So SATS is, going back to the Small Aircraft Transportation System. But what's interesting about an in business or even as a designer, what you name, what you're doing is very, very important. In this case, we were very disappointed that they named the system Small Aircraft Transportation, Transportation System. What they should have said, in our opinion, and maybe it will be, we we, we titled later at some point, call it the Small Airport Transportation System. Now, why would, why would that difference, why, why that difference? Well, the average person is not a pilot. And the average person thinks of small aircraft as being dangerous for some reason, which is not true. But it, it, if you're trying to develop something that the majority of people would get behind, the majority of us live near airports. And the majority of the airports are small. So you call it Small Airport Transportation System. And that made a lot more sense. So that's why we'd like to think of it as a Small Airport Transportation System. And the other element of that is many times developers want to buy the airport and shut it down. And because they don't know the true value of that airport. And they're less likely to shut down a community airport than they would a small airport for, you know, small aircraft airport, if you follow the thinking. In other words, communities, many of the communities don't really truly understand the value of small airports. Okay? So moving on, if you have, if we, if we integrate 20,000 of our airports, and of course, there'll be many more landing sites. The landing site could be for helicopters, it could be for drones and aircraft that are extremely stole aircraft. And all this is going to happen in the future. So when you say 20,000 airports, you can quadruple that in the number of landing sites. So that means that America, our country, we want to be first in a fully integrated transportation system. And that's what we're working on. And the airplane that we've chosen was this airplane, but not the size that we think Boeing is working on or had in mind. We sized this airplane for 50 passengers and cargo. And the term cargo and passenger is called COMB. So our airplane would be called COMB and the J, JCR, that's a jet commuter aircraft. So that is our jet regional, I'm sorry, jet regional commuter, regional being is smaller. And it, we're looking at hybrid and we're looking at a different, totally different design. You notice that the original, the aircraft that they, NASA tested in the prototype, had a typical tricycle landing gear. So as a designer and new young people out there, you have to understand the design. If you're going to design an airplane that will take the maximum cargo and the maximum number of passengers in practical terms to small airports, you have to design an airplane that distributes its weight. So it's not to break up the concrete, break up the taxiways, et cetera, et cetera. And therefore, in our case, our airplane has four landing gear. The landing gear are four, the quad, we call it a quad nesting gear. Okay? And not only is a quad nesting gear interesting in itself, because for a landing gear, you can divide the weight of the airplane. The typical airplane today, even like this one, is, let me find that one, this one here. The FAA says that 5% of the weight of the airplane is on a nose gear and 95% are divided between the two main gear. Well, if you had two more landing gear on both sides and they retract it vertically, okay, with me? Then when the airplane pilot taxis up to the terminal at a small airport, he or she retracts the landing gear. And the, and the airplane slowly sinks to the ramp. Okay? If you can picture that. And of course, when you get an airplane that will nest on the ramp like that, that means people can get it on and off more rapidly. You don't need passenger loading bridges. And another interesting element of the design, our design, is that when it sits on the ground, a person in a powered wheelchair can go right into the airplane unassisted. So you can go to an airport and they're called PLMs. That's passengers or people with limited mobility. If you went skiing and broke a leg, you would have limited mobility. Or if you're in a wheelchair, you're 25 years old, you're in a wheelchair because you broke a leg. You could still travel in this airplane because you can power onto the airplane. You don't need anyone to help you. That is incredibly good for our community and we hope. And we, we invite anyone out there to, to invent or to design aircraft the same way so that we can all benefit from the design. We, I don't mind sharing that to everyone and hopefully our major. Most of the airliners, they don't want to deal with because they have a pretty well-set way of designing aircraft. And that's a tubular aircraft that we have today, but that's not the aircraft of the future. What you're looking at right here is the aircraft of the future. Of course, it'll be different because the lower part of this airplane will have space for passengers and there'll be a door here and a door here. And then of course, the vertical landing gear, the four vertical landing gear. So that basically, I enjoy sharing that. And I'm interested in any questions you might have. Hello? What happened?
Sorry, got muted. Can you hear me?
Yes, now I can.
Yeah, can you see the Q and A box on Zoom? If not, I'll read it to you, but it's better you can see it.
Yeah, wait a minute here. Q and A, I got two questions, I think, but it's not opening.
Oh.
Oh, I know what I have to do. I have to go back to, I'll be have to go back to the original. Tell you what, just take me off a screen share and that will bring me back to where we were. Let me try again here. I don't know why it's not opening. Okay, give me the question.
Well, I think the first question from Disa, I think he was, she was just sharing some information. She says she just shared this with woman in Aviation International Chapter, number six, number 91. And the Boeing representatives in, you know, in this event. So it's not a question, but it's a comment. Then she has another question. She said she recalls seeing a chart indicating circled, circle areas for SUAS, strong airspace. Is this something that NIFS and SATS will be working with moving forward?
Well, that's, well, let me try to answer it this way. The big picture in this case is we call it the National Interstate Flyway System. And there are three major elements to make this work. One is the actual system itself, and that's the ADS-B and NASA. And we're moving very quickly in that direction. There's a lot happening. And that's good. Okay. Then you need an airplane like the DC-3 and what they call, which was a wonderful airplane, Douglas built airplane, which was the workhorse of the last century, made a lot of money because it, it was smart. It was a smart airplane. And so we think the JRC will be the airplane, the DC-3 and the C-47 of this century. And we hope like everything else, other designers will, will come out with their own aircraft that is best suited for the the National Interstate Flyway System. And so that's the second element. The third element is what we call a global airport. And a global airport is totally different in size and in concept of operation than a international airport. And of course, in this country, we have about 55 international airports. The problem in this country as compared to, and I always make the, the analogy or a simple example, which is I've always enjoyed, but it's the best way to share the, this concept. If you look at a M'Zari warrior in Africa, he's a tall, stately gentleman. He has a spear in one hand, the cattle is behind him. You don't see his Mercedes, but it's there. And he is representing his culture. And in his right hand is a cellphone. And so Africa or other countries have benefited from the technology. They leaped, you know, 15 years. They didn't have to build telephone poles and wire, cup of wire. They went right directly to the right transportation, I mean, communication system. So they benefited from the technology incredibly. In aviation and in airports, we have the same, in a sense, the same problem. We want to benefit from the technology, but the airports that we have today was like the telephones of 50 years ago. They were built in the middle of metropolitan areas, which created a landlocked situation. Then they create noise. They limit their operations because at night you can't no matter how quiet the airplane is, when they put the landing gear down, it gets pretty noisy. So there were so many limitations, they can't grow. And it's not only that they can't grow in space on the ground, they can't grow because of the airspace. If you're going to be moving a lot of airplanes 24/7, there's just not enough airspace. It's unsafe. Especially when we go into drones and air taxi drones and so forth. There's more and more of that in the future. So your airport has to be designed to take this new high intensity of air movements. And that's why we, we believe that the United States needs 10 of these global airports. Three on the West Coast, three on the East Coast, three in the middle of our country and one in Florida. And what, what the global airport really does is act like a terminal for all these movements. There's more airspace involved. It's moved to an airplane, an area where they create green space around it so it can operate 24/7. And, and people are not impacted, their lives aren't impacted that way. And then the airport becomes more of an industrial complex where just-in-time manufacturing takes place, people go to work in this gigantic complex. So this is, and it's remoted from our metropolitan cities. But the connectivity now is through these electric drones or not electric air taxis and so forth. So that's coming. And it's just, I'm just painting for our young people in STEM to get involved in designing. We think, we're hoping that the first one will be built in Florida. But we'll hope someone will start moving in. The closest we have to a global airport in our country is in Denver. And Denver has shut down Stapleton Airport. Why? Why? Because exactly what I said, it was in the middle of the city of Denver and it just couldn't grow. And the people said, no. And they shut down that little airport. They shouldn't really shut it down completely, but they did. But that's okay. And they couldn't turn it into an air taxi type operation. But anyway, they did it. And even today now on top of buildings and there'll be landing sites all over the city. So it's not a big deal. But if, then they moved the airport about 25 miles to the northeast and put it on, I think it's up to 50 square miles now. And even that's not big enough for the future. But anyway, that will give you an idea that the biggest airport we have in our country today is 50 square miles. And we need a lot more airplane, airports that size.
Major Cosentino. Hi, Major Cosentino. Thank you so much. This is Lisa Gathard. And I thank you so much for your presentation and your service and contribution. My father served in the Navy. And also I have a passion for, you know, our military. I come from a military family. So the presentation that I shared was for renewable, sustainable energy and the future of air flights, such as you're sharing the C-47. And I shared the X-59 supersonic low boom. And this is something that I am sharing with students for Aviation Day, Girls in Aviation Day. And trying to let them understand the future of aviation, aeronautics, astronomy, because of SOFIA. SOFIA is the stratospheric aircraft that's back up and in the air. So there is so much, like you stated, that is in the future. And the reason why I asked about the charting is I thought, whoa, wait a minute. If we're going to have more SUAS drones flying, not only from a civilian standpoint, but from a commercial and military part. And these are drones. We already have them. We know that they're, you know, they're side by side, wingtip to wingtip. We don't know whether one's an actual pilot in one aircraft and the other is a drone. So my concern was, like you mentioned about the landscape, green space for these sustainable renewable energy, low boom Chevron planes to land. But otherwise, having a separate quarters for the SUAS drones to be perhaps other air traffic controllers and other space for the drones to land. What is your perspective on something like this?
Well, the optimum, as best we understand it, and of course, the future belongs to our young people and they'll come up with the right, and market forces will direct the right decisions. But my sense of it is, and I'll give you an example. In Florida, we have a very large area in the center of this state that has been mined for phosphate and destroyed. Hundreds, 100 square miles or more. And this land, no one wants to build in it because it's been completely destroyed by mining, surface mining. And so if you have a global airport and the way, the basic design of a global airport will answer that question. The design, and I'll make it simple, is 10 by 10 miles. That's 10 by 10 is obviously 100 square miles. But it also means that you have 40 statute miles of fence line, okay? There's 40 miles of, if you drove around at 40 miles an hour, take an hour to just drive around the airport, okay? But when you drove around the airport on the perimeter, and this is a generic design, okay? You'll find that all your smaller airports are placed along the fence line. The terminal, the secure area is inside and the parking is on the outside. And that buses pull up, rail pulls up. You know, each airport along the fence line is dedicated to helicopters and dedicated to corporate flying, dedicated to light sports aircraft, dedicated to the military. And in the center of the airport is a terminal. And the best way to understand the terminal is a donut. And the donut, just to help people understand, a donut, but you only build a quarter of the donut. Why do you only build a quarter of the donut? Well, because 100 years, 200 years from now, you'll need more space for more airplanes. So they can build and complete the donut. You might complete the donut by the end of this century. Who knows? But in any case, what's happening today, in contrast, is our airports keep tearing down terminals. And it's an incredible waste of money to tear down things and then have to rebuild them and tear them down and rebuild them and tear them down and rebuild them. And still, it's not going to meet the needs of the future. So stop doing that. I mean, leave it the way it is and start building these global airports. That would be, and the global airport, the reason why you have the terminal in the center of this large complex is that those airplanes go nonstop to every destination on the planet. If you're going regional or you're going urban, you'll land on the periphery of the airport. If you're going nonstop with cargo or passengers and passengers and cargo, whatever, or even going into space, okay? You would go out to that outer terminal, the big terminal or the international terminal. The airports around the perimeter are essentially national airports, county airports, city airports, that sort of thing. And so that's the basic. When you have global airports and you have an airplane designed for that type of operation to serve all our airports. And when you have the right system, which is being developed today, then we'd be very, very successful. And all these young people will, we invite them to be involved in this because it's theirs. They own the future. I hope that helped you understand how this thing would work.
Yes, thank you very much. It does. I appreciate this.
Okay, super.
I have one more question. And this is regarding the photograph behind you, the aircraft that you mentioned.
Right.
And I am really interested in the capabilities of, you mentioned that is being refurbished and being used for electrical power.
Well, yeah, sure. I'll be, there's an airplane, a very interesting fellow in not far from St. Paul, Minneapolis-St. Paul, on a lake there. For 30 years, he's been building an airplane called the Mariner, which is a biplane. It is a flying boat. It is a pusher. And he started out with a Mazda engine. Now I'm going to move out of the way. You notice, I don't know if you see if I put, do you see this when I'm with, are you able to observe that?
I see it. And I have a, I have a book, a very thick book of all the airplanes and aircraft, so.
So we're going to put electric motor right there. And oops, right there will be electric motor. And this airplane had a engine.
Excuse me, Neil, I think your screen is not responding. So you might need to reshare it, stop and reshare it.
Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, I mean on your end.
Oh, what am I supposed to do? I'm sorry.
Yeah, please stop the sharing and try to share it again.
Oh, okay. Let me see if I can find that. Okay, well, if you still see me, you're still seeing me?
Yes, yes.
In the background, okay, let me leave it there.
Sure.
I can point with my finger right here.
Absolutely.
Right there, that's where the electric engine would be. The actual airplane had a six-cylinder marine engine with a pulley and a chain drive. And of course, it was successful. It was noisy, et cetera, et cetera. But we're building something that will look like that, but more light aircraft, what they call light sports aircraft. And it'll have landing gear as well. But you won't see it, it won't be hanging down. It's a retractable, it's outside the fuselage. So it is very typical of some of these type of designs. The reason why we're building that is that we, I have restarted or reestablished the St. Petersburg-Tampa Airboat Line, which was the original Inc., which was the original business that owned that airplane and operated it as the first scheduled airline. So building a small, light aircraft like that, it should be a lot of fun flying. I've done a lot of flying, but I'm really looking forward to the fun of flying this airplane. So if any of your students want to be involved in the design, we could share ideas. I could share what I have so far. I could show you pictures of it. And maybe your students would want to build one or more and enjoy some really fun flying. I hope that helps answer that question.
Yes, I'll put my information in the chat line. And the reason being, we changed and embraced STEAM because of the arts component and, you know, the architecture, the architectural designs and also the implementation of taking renewable energy refurbished. You know, we have so many airplanes that are grounded and, you know, the area where all the planes that are just laid there, there are parts that could be refurbished and reused and created and developed.
All that stuff is, yeah, absolutely. Our airplanes today, while there are new airplanes in light sport, but they're so expensive. I find it so strange that we can build a Chevrolet Spark, okay? Weighs over 2,000 pounds. And you can buy one for 17,000 and you can't buy a 900-pound airplane for less than 50, 60, 70,000 or 100,000. So something is really wrong that we haven't figured out how to build inexpensive airplanes that the average person could afford. And that's going to change, I hope, in the future. But if your young people want to build or want to be the Ford of the future, you know, a car in every garage and an airplane in every backyard, okay?
I agree. Thank you so much.
Okay, you bet. Have the kids see, I'll help whatever they're doing. So I'll be more than.
Absolutely. I have a Girls in Aviation Day scheduled in September. But leading up to it, we are developing different ideas to pique their interest. And we're going to keep it going year round and keep going.
Well, I could share something with you that would be helpful, okay? Our DOD, Department of Defense, can direct every military installation to have an aero club, okay? And aero clubs at every military installation will increase the number of pilots and be entry points, all points of our country. And why we don't do this is beyond me. We do have 17 aero clubs in the Air Force. We have five aero clubs in the Navy. We have only two aero clubs in the Army. But if we had all aero clubs at every one of our national, military installations, then we'd get a lot more young people flying. And the sooner that happens. So if your, if your kids want to get involved in politics, because what you do is they write letters to their congressman and their senator. And they say, we want the DOD to require it as mandatory, not optional. They have to, that's a tremendously good investment. And it's an investment in their future, an investment in this country. So I can share that with you as well.
I appreciate it. I appreciate. Thank you so much. I really do. Thank you.
Great. Okay, I think I've really covered everything.
Yeah, Neil, I think Bob has some question or comment.
Okay.
Mr. Kaplow.
Oh, I just wanted to point out that the biggest cost in small aircraft, general aviation, pre-general aviation aircraft today is liability.
Well, yeah, that's true. But why is it so? You know, you have cars. Cars go 100 miles an hour, 50 miles an hour, 75 miles, whatever. And I don't understand why that is. But anyway, that's the way it is. That can change though, can't it?
It can, but in this society, I don't think it's going to.
Well, it won't unless, if we don't speak up. You're right. You're right. Just build them safe, that's all. And don't have the problem with liability. One of the interesting things, you know, I'm very much into aviation safety. And let me explain something in that area because there's synergy here. You see, if you want to end repeatable accidents, let me explain that. When I solo a pilot and then eventually he gets his certificate and he goes off on a career, I do this purposely. And I wait, actually, it's almost like theater. And I wait till he goes out to his car. And then I go and meet him at his car as he gets out. So by the way, you know, because usually there's a good rapport between the instructor pilot and the pilot, the student pilot, you know? We get to know each other. You teach them something that they really enjoy. And it's a really nice feeling to be able to, to help people like that. The other thing about me is, of course, I have the opportunity to only fly with people I like. If I don't seem like I'll get along with someone, I'll refer them to another instructor. But in any case, this, the point, I meet him at the car and I say to him, would you do me a favor? And they're surprised. And I said, would you do me a favor? But let me say that I hope, I hope you have a wonderful career in the future and flying and so forth. And I said, and you may have an accident. And I sure hope you don't. But if you do, would you make it an original one? Okay? That's the last message I'd leave to these guys that I teach how to fly. Make it original. The point being that we keep getting these repeating accidents. And it comes to an issue of, is it pilot training error or is it pilot error? In my humble opinion, about 90% is pilot training error. And the other 10% might be pilot error itself. And in the area of reducing the 90%, talking about, you know, the cost of liability and so forth. The, if the government was required that any pilot who flies an airplane they've never flown before, never flown before, for the first time, they're required. It's not optional. It's by law, it's in the FARs, that they must review the accident incident history of that airplane, okay? Because if they, they know you've done all you can for these pilots. You said, hey, this airplane has had X number accidents this way and X number, and this is what, and da, 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 da. But at least they'll been prepared. At least they were warned. At least they would noted that this happened, this happened, how many times you want to get. And we keep doing the same thing over and over again, killing people because they're not been trained properly. So there's always a solution. It's getting better because of the technology and the simulators and all that. But in any case, that's my little spiel on that. I just think our government and our safety people are not, not providing what pilots need to know. And I'll tell you another interesting story. You could, I tell, it's my, one of my favorite stories. It's called a Jurassic Park story, okay? Two pilots, one instructor pilot and their student, and the other instructor pilot and student. Two pilots, one instructor pilot and their student, the other instructor pilot and student, uh, they land at a little airport next to Jurassic Park. And, uh, they go up to the gate and, and one instructor pilot tells the other, uh, his student, I said, you know, in the middle of that park is this beautiful tree house and there's all these fun girls and women and they love pilots and it's free beer. And, but, but don't go in there at nine o'clock or twelve o'clock, because that's when the dinosaurs eat. And the other instructor pilot doesn't tell his student that, okay? If you get the point. In other words, uh, if you don't know, you're gonna kill yourself or, you know, you just, it, it's, it's terrible and that's what's happening, in my opinion, anyway. I hope, that's a long explanation of liability of small airplanes, but in any case, that's what I believe. I'm sharing.
Yeah, the, the slide, uh, it's not advancing, so it kind of freeze.
Uh, yeah, I, I don't know what happened here, but anyway, I think, uh, anyone else have any questions or something? I hope you enjoy my book. I'm making it available for anyone who wants a copy in PDF. Um, and I'm hoping that these young people will start writing their own books as they go through life and they're flying and sharing their experiences, um, in aviation and engineering and so forth.
Okay, so I, I temporarily stopped your slide sharing and then you can restart afterwards.
Okay, I think we're back to normal here, okay? Yeah, there we are.
Okay, you can, now you can, you can share again, this should be okay.
Okay, no, I, I, yeah, anymore, let's see, there's one more question here. Let me click that, it says, okay, there it is. Oh, you're welcome, Lisa, anything that I can do to help. Okay, I'll send you the book and, uh, yeah, sure.
Oh, so, so you will share with us your, uh, great book, the book?
Yes.
Wow, that's wonderful.
Yeah, I said in PDF, I could share, do you want me to send it to you and then you send it out or just?
Yeah, could, could we, do you want to share only to the attendee or you wanted to post our AWA Los Angeles website?
I, I have no problem, anyone wants to read it, uh, and enjoy it.
Wonderful, okay, okay.
Yeah, I'd be happy to share it with anyone who wants it.
Yeah, but remember to sign the form, because without your form, we cannot do that, yeah.
Okay, I will do that. As soon as this is over, I'll, I'll go over and, um.
Okay.
And sign that, I sure will.
Okay. Yeah, so, so when you mentioned about reading the book, did you read the book to, uh, the school kid in classroom or is more in like a small group of, uh, students?
Well, I, I, um, no, I haven't done that yet. I, the book is in the library and it's kind of an interesting, uh, way that the book was written. Uh, my sister, uh, older sister, uh, I told her a few stories and she suggested that I write them. Uh, and then I, I wrote them and then she said, well, you should write some more. So eventually, uh, I picked some of the stories and I'm working on another book of short stories. But here's an interesting element of that, and I can share with anyone. Um, when you write a book of true short stories, the genre is, a short story is supposed to be, um, uh, what do they call that? A short story is a, um, fiction. Well, I didn't know that because I'm an English major, I'll fight about it. But, uh, I said, well, uh, no, these are true short stories, it's not fiction, they're short stories. It's not a journal, it's not a autobiography, it's not a biography, it's none of that. It's just a book of true short stories. So they, uh, uh, so I said, well, okay, well, if you don't want to think of it as, uh, it's not a book of short stories, then I'll give it a name and I'll call it a famliography, okay? So then you say, well, what is a famliography? Okay? And I said, well, that's a, um, because you come up with a new word, a famliography as compared to autobiography. A famliography is something that I enjoy sharing because it says that if your young people write stories when they're young, eventually the stories are, each story is a leaf on the family tree, okay? Or a story to go along with the photographs and so forth. Uh, and then eventually, when they get older, they can look back and, uh, on all the things that they wrote and then write their own autobiography or their own famliography in this case. So I encourage, that's why I'm encouraging everyone to keep a journal so that they can write their own famliography. I hope that makes sense to people, it makes sense to me. But, um, uh, it, it's a nice thing because, uh, the, the kids in my family and the young people in my family, I can't sit down with them and tell them twenty flying stories, but I can leave a book behind and say, well, this is what my uncle did. And then they know what it was like to be in war, uh, how people felt about warfare and so forth, or how they felt about flying, um, and the safety and all the other things that are in the book. So, um, and so I'm sharing with anyone else and encouraging to write their own famliography, if that makes sense to those listening.
Uh, do you also have like the audio, audiobook, like you, you, uh, read it and record it as audiobook?
Well, I would like to do that and I went to the library, I, I donated some of the books to the library and I, because I said, here in Hillsborough County in Tampa, and we have a wonderful library system. And I'd be more than happy, I thought the best way, uh, if there are fifteen stories in my book, and I would prefer that each story is, uh, uh, is told, or you might say trans, uh, transcribed or recorded by a different voice. Uh, I felt that that would be more interesting. And, um, so I'm still working on that, but, uh, I haven't been able to find fourteen people to, you know, people that have a very interesting voice and can read the stories, uh, it's not the same voice over and over again. So that would, I would encourage, I'll try to do that one of these days. And that should be a fun thing to do.
Yeah, I understand, understand what you mean, you know, the, the voice sometimes are very important, you know, different voice, you know, that, uh.
I say, more interesting too, I think, uh, it might even have a Spanish accent or a, or Chinese accent or, or, you know, or European accent or German or whatever, but it's all very interesting that way. It just adds a little more interest to the story.
Actually, you are right. We can, actually, we can immediately tell, you know, uh, or some, some, some person, they're very good in this, their voice are very suitable for this. Uh, we do know some people, but I, I don't know whether, I can check with them, see if they would be interested as a volunteer, uh, effort. Uh, some of, they actually work on some more, you know, professional, you know, this kind of, uh, broadcast thing, but, you know, hopefully we can find somebody.
Yeah, that would be nice, be happy to do that, yeah. Especially what really makes it interesting if they're well-known people, you know what I mean? If they're be willing to do that for a project for our kids. Or even if a young person reads the story and records it. If any of those young people out there in, uh, in STEM want to record the book, go right ahead, be my guest.
Oh, okay, so maybe, uh, you know, we can work as a STEM project here, you know, to help some of our students, young people read, yeah, okay, well, closely work with you. Yeah, it's getting more and more exciting, yeah. And Lisa just make a comment, they say, may, maybe, you know, uh, could also do something for the sight hearing impairments, you know, for accessibility, yeah, good idea. Stay in touch.
Stay, they can add their own stories, right?
That's right, we'll definitely work on this, yeah, yeah, that, this is just so amazing. And, uh, the.
Good.
Oh, yeah, the, the, the one thing, the other thing, you know, we, we definitely, you know, AWA Los Angeles, that's very, very interested in supporting this aircraft safety. We used to have like, uh, event, uh, there's, uh, you know, the Air France four-four-seven? Yeah, and we also have like FAA people talking about this, uh, uh, St. Helens, you know, the volcano, uh, eruption and aircraft safety. So, I mean, if, if you, you know, if, if you could speak, you know, something aircraft safety or something like a flyway that you're doing, ADS-B, you know, we're more than happy or some kind of article, we're more than happy to arrange, you know, with you, you know?
Okay, well, you could put me on, uh, if you want to do ADS-B next or aircraft safety or flying safety, um, some of the, I'll share some of the things that people, some people don't do, but, uh, if I were to, are you a pilot? Let me just ask you that.
I, I'm not, I'm very interested, I, I attended several FAA courses, but not yet.
Yeah, well, let, let me say this, if I taught you how to fly now, and we, we got the engine started and we taxied out to the runway. And well, just before we pull onto the runway, uh, I cover all the instruments.
I see.
I cover all, except for the engine instruments. And I cover them because the first thing I tell them is that the Wright brothers did not have instruments in their airplanes, right?
That's right.
Okay, okay. So that means they flew without instruments, okay? But that wasn't the real point. The point was that when you roll onto the runway, you want to listen to the engine, you want to feel the airplane, you want to listen to the airplane, you want to feel the airplane, and you want to watch the airplane as it rolls down the runway, how much runway it uses, forget about the instruments. You, but what's really more important is you want to look out, make sure no airplane is landing or going to be, uh, or there's an alligator on the runway, or there's a car on the runway, or there's an airplane that's gonna cross the runway, or there are birds on the runway. And these are the things that will damage your airplane or kill you, not the instruments, you follow me? And so we fly, we take off and we fly the entire, uh, traffic pattern with the instruments covered. Now, you know, I asked you, if I did that, what would you think? Well, and, but let me, let me give you another instrument. If at night, and I'll give you an example, in other words, you can fly the airplane, you can feel it and, and you know, you get to know the airplane. And then if at night sometime, you lose all electrical power, but you can't find your flashlight, guess what? You revert back to, I could do this, I've done it, I've seen it done, and I could land this airplane without any instruments in a, in a dark cockpit. You, you see what I'm saying? You understand that?
I understand, yeah, fully understand, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so these are the kind of things, it's not in the book.
It's not, yeah.
No, it's not in the book. And, uh, and another thing, I'll give you another example. Uh, at the end of the runway, I walk out on the end of the runway and make sure there are no, um, nothing that would cut the tires, it's, you know, the overrun and into the grass. And then I have the pilot land, my student, and I say, keep your feet off the brakes. And, 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 uh, the airplane keeps rolling and, and I say, well, what, what are you gonna do? Well, the thing, he should shut down the engine, should turn the fuel off, he should, uh, turn the mags off, turn the battery off, and the airplane will roll right out into the overrun, right? Because what we were practicing was that, uh, if you ever landed and lose the brakes or landed in the, in the, in the rain or whatever caused you to overrun, you've done the right thing at least once. And so we're sitting at the overrun on the airport and people are saying, oh, he made a mistake. I said, no, that wasn't a mistake, that was a purposeful demonstration of what you should do, not in the simulator, not in your head, but physically. And, and these are the kind of training things that, uh, make better pilots, in my opinion.
Yeah, company agreed with you, you know, our speaker for the Air France forty-four-four-seven, he was a former Navy captain. And he was saying a similar thing, he said that Air France, the, the failure was tragedy was more, a lot of things were related to the insert, the failure of the instruments. And he was kind of feeling because if, if it was, uh, the pilot was not had, but that, that's his comment, he feel that for his generation of pilot, they will be able to maneuver, uh, out of the stall, you know? Uh, this is typical for them, they do aircraft land, uh, carrier landing all the time, they know how to do it, exactly what you're saying. But the, the, I think the situation was at that time, the modern aircraft relied so much on the instrument when they failed, and unfortunately all failed, you know, and then, uh, it become very tough situation and, uh, but ideally, if you were, you know, with your training or, you know, the, the former generation training, they will be able to port it out, and they did all the time.
Well, there's a, there's another interesting thing I would teach you if you were my student. Um, it, it's called five finger flying. Now, you'd say, five, what are five fingers? And I came across this because, you know, I had a lot of flying, a lot of experience, but if I haven't flown for a long time, uh, this is way back, I would grab the control column like a death grip, you know, with all five, all five fingers, right? And, and then I realized that I was putting so much tension and so much strength and energy in gripping the wheel because I had not flown for a while, right? And then I said, and then I took that idea and I said, what I'm gonna teach my student is, and typically a student will use all five fingers to hold a control wheel. But then I teach them to use four fingers and then three fingers and then two fingers and then one finger and then no fingers. And so they, it, so it's telling you that if you trim the airplane up, okay? If you know your airplane and you trim it up, you don't need five fingers, you follow me?
Yes, yes, yes.
And, and it takes, it tells you that you're not, if you're gripping the wheel, that means your tension, something's wrong, you're not cool, you're not relaxed, you're not observant, your energy is not where it should be, okay? So anyway, so these are all the little things you won't read in a book, um, but you share.
Yeah, you are, you are the flight instructor, right? You are the flight instructor. Yeah, that's amazing, yeah. We have a lot of DASOGA here as well. And one, one comment about the Wright flyer, actually, we have a, a test pilot. He actually went somewhere through the, uh, uh, original, uh, what I think is the Wright flyer without any instrument and he loved it. He loved the original way of the Wright flyer. Yeah, ownership. I echo what you said. And, and actually, we, we, uh, for the Los Angeles section of AWA, we actually help in preserving the replica of the Kitty Hawk in front of the FAA building. It was relocated, uh, to a museum and we facilitated a few years ago. Now he's now, uh, safely and in the local aerospace museum.
Oh, wonderful. Well, there's, there are a lot smarter people, a lot better people as instructors than me, but we're not sharing, and we're, it's getting better, don't get me wrong. It's, the, the system is getting much better than it used to be, but it's nowhere where it should be, okay?
Understand, understand, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
That's wonderful, you know, people, people really love to hear those aviation story, uh, you know, story, and also the world war time story, you know, the aircraft safety. So, uh, stay in touch, you know, we'll.
I will, okay.
More, more event with you, really, yeah, thank you, everyone, this, thank you, thanks, uh, Neil again, I really appreciate fantastic presentation.
Fly safe, take care.
Yeah, fly safe, blue skies.
Bye.
Bye bye, bye bye.
Bye now.